Okay, it's five o'clock and we call the meeting to order. Pursuant to government appeal is March 29th, 2023 revised order suspending certain provisions in the open meeting law. GL chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen. Meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee will begin after both in-person and votes from March 31st, 2025. Agenda items listed to those recently anticipated by the chair and all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB and the school committee recorder will be broadcast. Once transcribed and approved minutes will be made public and posted to our website. This meeting will be recorded by CTSB and by the Berkshire as well. So the first order of business is the Berkshire Hills Regional School District School Committee. Will enter executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A one-three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation in open meeting while complaining against the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. Holding discussions in open session may have a detrimental effect on litigation. Following the executive session, the school committee will recommit the regular meeting at six P M. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A one-three?
So moved second.
Motion by Bill Fields and second by Bill Vol. It'll be a roll call vote, Bill.
Hi.
Bill.
Aye.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
Sarah.
Aye.
Jason.
And I, it's unanimous, we shall go into the superintendent's office.
You'll leave that unmuted. Are we unmuted?
We're in, uh, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to a little bit session. Okay, we're back in open session and turn it over to the superintendent.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Tonight, we're, we're gonna go through the budget. I don't think we've got minutes in this package.
We're gonna.
So we'll start with roses and thorns. And I think, so we changed our seating around a little bit, so I think it makes sense for the principals to come up to one end of the table. Just to share things and alternate. Miles is out tonight, so he's not, not joining us, so he might be online. So Katie, can we start with you?
So last night, there was a wonderful band and string concert for the grade four students. They were very excited. We had tomorrow night, PTA is having a craft night, so the families are looking forward to that. And next week, we have playworks coming. They're gonna do a whole day with the teachers, they're gonna meet some of the kids who are gonna be coaches on the playground for the younger kids. Some fourth grader kiddos are applying for that. And, um, I don't know, I guess our thorn will probably be a lot of sickness going around, so we're still. I don't know if we're ever gonna get rid of this, if you have a mind. Thank you.
No, thank you. I don't think there are any middle school students, so let's start with a high school student.
All right, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, so basically, this, this Saturday, we have our Valentine's Day dance, which we're all very excited for. Also, a pleasant surprise, in the orchestra today, we had some pre-K students come up and dance, hoping did a few songs, which is really, really sweet. I believe it's next Wednesday, February fourteenth. Each SOB subcommittee is gonna be meeting with some faculty members discussing our upcoming goals, which is very exciting. We had a previous one that went really well, so we have the same hopes for this upcoming one. The, the Environmental Subcommittee of SOB, which I'm a member of, and Romano here is our facilitator. We're working very hard to open a monument for a store. We already have a designated space for it. Our custodians have been very kind and cleaning up for us, so we're very excited about getting that up and running. I know that we also have the, some people from the swim team qualified for Western Mass. I believe the same applies for the wrestling team. I think that's pretty much it for now, unless. Just trying also add a few things.
We have to shout out our boys' basketball team because they're doing amazing this year, so. Quick congratulations to them, because we know that we're going into the tournament. And they also have some skiers, I think, to be headed off to tournament stuff as well. We have a community breakfast that is being organized by our Communications and Celebrations SOB Subcommittee. And we have, there was something else I was gonna say, and I don't remember. The thorn that I would like to share is actually right along with same lines as Katie. I was thinking, the thing that I, we're still really struggling with is just the staffing changes. On the upside, we have been able to fill positions that opened mid-year for the most part. We still have our CVTE Assistant Principal position open, but we did find a long-term sub for our Social Studies position. And we replaced our Administrative Assistant in the front office, and we have a long-term sub in for PE. But we have a lot of sickness still in the building. I guess to balance that off, we have more subs than we had a couple of years ago. So at least we are not scrambling quite as much every day to, to make sure that everything's covered that needs to be, so.
Great, thanks. So I had two things up to on the district level, ones connected to the high school grounds. The other night, folks noticed the smell of gas by the high school, and it was the same night as the girls' basketball game. So the Great Grandin Police Department and the Fire Department stayed and responded to that. And then Berkshire Gas came and addressed it to a degree at night, and then early the next morning resolved it. So that was a night, and also our maintenance people, so that was a nice, that was a nice partnership all around on the thorn side. There's a spot sort of close to the transportation where somebody's been burning wood, perhaps stumps. And that's created a lot of smoke, and that smoke, the way the wind's blowing, likely goes right to the schools, and it's noticeable. So I spoke to the, or connected with the fire chief about it, and he's working on, and trying to get that to not happen anymore. So, so those are two things. I don't think we have any discrete grant approvals for tonight. I did put on the agenda a vote to accept school choice students for the next year. We're getting to the point where we respond to the requests for school choice. And each year, the school committee needs to take action on doing it. And usually what you do is you vote to accept it, and you leave it to me to figure out where there's space and how to accept kids. So it's my strong recommendation, we do it, we get many more school choice students in than we lose. And we're very careful to not accept the X plus one student that would then force us to create an additional class or have a negative impact on, on what we're trying to do.
Motion to accept school choice students for the fiscal year, or 2025 school year.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed or abstentions? So what is your unanimous vote?
Thank you, thank you, let's go, and now I can reach out to, I mean, Dorie does the lottery and all of that, but we'll, we'll shortly reach out to. So the, the next thing, and really the bulk of the meeting tonight is, is the budget presentation, so I'll pull that up. And Sharon and I will, will work through it together. As, and once I put it out, we'll get really focused on itself, so I'll say a couple introductory things. This, if you've been following through the state news, we're going into what's gonna be one of the tougher budget cycles in recent memory. My first year, fifteen years ago, there was a really tough budget cycle, and, and this could be like that again. What's a little different is, the last few years, we've had significant additional federal grant money that was tied to the response to COVID and other things, and that money that we, we use really effectively is, is sunsetting or drying up. Right, so there's a little less flexibility there. We still continue to write grants and continue to be successful at doing that, but, but things are, are tighter than, than they have been in, in a while. So let me just give me a sec to pull up the presentation, and, and then we'll work through that. Okay. So, the, the thing, there is a lot of slides, but there's not a lot of information on each of the slides, and I'll work through it. You've got, the people in the room have copies in front of you with notes on it. Typically, when, when we do this, I start with the mission to ensure that all students are challenged through a wide range of experiences to become engaged, curious learners, and problem solvers who effectively communicate, respect diversity, and improve themselves and their community. So that's where we start. Our budget priorities are to continue to provide high-quality education for all students, to continue to provide a range of social emotional supports. That would be important in any context, but it's particularly important in these post-COVID years. And in other contexts, I've shared that the impact of that may linger for quite some time. We're making, we're making progress, but there, this year's seniors are the ones that started ninth grade during COVID. And, and, and that's a group that I continue to focus on, as well as younger students who came into school not necessarily having had as many opportunities to build strong social relationships before they showed up. And then stuff with reading and all the rest. So what we're sharing now is our proposed budget, this is our best thinking. At this time, Sharon and I and, and the principals and Kate and Colin did a lot of work on this. We also met regularly with the Finance Subcommittee. What often happens is that Sharon, those people have questions about it and wonder about it, and, and that's what we'll be talking about. Maybe a little bit tonight, but, but also the next several meetings. And then for people who are new to this, then at the point where we're comfortable with it, the school committee would vote on it, and then, and then send it to the towns, and then the towns will vote. So let me start with the first few pages, and at a certain point, I'll hand it over to Sharon. So the, first, we'll start with budget changes. So at the elementary school, we're, we're really focusing in three areas. Realocating existing resources to meet changing enrollment needs as, as needed or as, as necessary. There are clusters or groups of young people that they've changed by grade, it's tied to birth rate and enrollment. And, and in some places, we need four sections, and in other places, we can do with three. And that's really what, what happens at the elementary school level. One of those is, is our plan to reduce next year's kindergarten from four sections to three sections. And to continue to support in-depth professional development in math, we're also doing it in, in reading and literacy, like we're hot on in math. But at, at the middle school, we're continuing with four core teams and specials. Continued emphasis on professional development for SEL or, or social emotional learning, and the potential reallocation of one FTE or full-time equivalent from the middle school to potentially the, the elementary school. There are two sort of sets of subgroups that, that shift some. English language learners can shift as they sort of, just where they are, right? What grade and age they're in, and also special education students or students with particular learning needs. Sometimes they're, they're more in the middle school, and then they move as a cohort to the high school and vice versa. At the, at the high school, continued work around, and review and planning around CDTE, Career Vocational and Technical Education. Chris and I had a good call this morning or early afternoon with our state liaison there, and talked about that. We anticipate reducing our math staffing by half a full-time equivalent, reducing a Social Studies position by one full-time equivalent, and likely one other full-time equivalent reduction. And, and where we're able to do it by retirements or attrition, we do it, and where we're not, then, then we, then we do it other ways. All of this is tied to student enrollment, so enrollment goes up and down, and sometimes our staffing is, is consistent with that enrollment, and sometimes it, it lags a little bit. Let me then make it clear to you, Mark, let me go through these, and then I'll let you do the next section. So health and dental insurance is, is obviously a big part of our budget. We're anticipating a 5.39% total increase in health, or a little more than $300,000. Berkshire Health group set, rates were set at seven, but, but what that means in relation to everybody who gets insurance and who doesn't, who's on family plans, all of that changes. In the last several years, we had had premium holidays, we are not having a premium holiday this year.
Is that a hundred percent definite?
At this time, they didn't vote on it.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, and, and feel free, and maybe they will, right?
No.
Yeah, which would be great. And there's no change in our dental rates, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but in, in sort of inflationary cycle, where it's sort of a big deal. The, the medics rate changes in January, it was a 5.5% increase, but the actual hit to us is a 4.07%.
What is medics?
Can you? Medics is the Medicare supplemental insurance. And ours happens to have the part, the equivalent for prescriptions.
The Berkshire County Retirement, this is for the non-certified staff, is going up 4.07% to $41,836. The, in, in some deal like this, the Educational Services and Tuition is decreasing by 2.15% for $42,500. And, and Transportation is an increase of 11.04% or $293,826. And Sharon, can you just remind people what that means?
Right, so the transportation costs per bus increased by the CPI, which was about eight, 2.85%. We have a number of students, as you've heard from Kate, that are in out-of-district placements, and they're in day placements. So this includes that transportation. Eighty-five percent of this increase is actually due to that transportation.
But that does not include the extracurricular transportation, which is, you know, like.
Right, that, that's included in the operating budget under the athletics and activities.
Couple more, Technology is an increase of 30.45%, a little more than $105,000. And that's both software and, and refresh of devices. Over time, if you look at our budget longitudinally, we're spending less money on techs and more money on, on technology. And Facilities and Operations, a slight increase of 1.4% or $12,500. Utilities continue to go up, 2.24% or $21,920. Educational Supplies, Materials and Equipment, an increase of 4.05% or $16,350. And Professional Development is a decrease of 0.77% or $1,050. Much of our Professional Development budget exists outside of our, outside of our regular budget, and is, is going to get trimmed. So when you look at the Professional Development line, we don't spend as much as one might want to spend, but we, we cover that with, with grants. So why don't I turn it over to Sharon for the, oh, I'm sorry. So Legal and Other Insurance is a decrease of 2.31%, almost $4,000. And Other Administrative Costs, an increase of 1.06% or $4,000. You both sort of watch each other out. Let me turn it over to Sharon to start talking about the operating budget and capital budget, and then the thing that I think people are most interested in. What, what's the bottom line, what does this mean for the, the towns and their assessments?
Great, so we'll go to the next slide. So the operating budget, the gross operating budget, which is the total budget before we subtract the revenue from choice and tuition. So the gross operating budget is $35,000, $39,758, or an increase of $1,517,900 for a 4.53%. And that's reflective of all the changes that Peter had talked about. So what we did was we broke down the changes by category that Peter talked about, and also as a percentage of the change. So salaries increased 4.14% and 50%, 50.56% of the total change, which makes sense because it's over 75% of our total budget is salaries and benefits, or $767,403. Benefits, that's health insurance. It includes unemployment, it includes separation benefits for retirement, increased 4.46, and that's 20.97% or $318,271. Again, transportation is, the category is 11.04%, and it's the next highest change at 19.36 or 293,826. Again, 85% of that is due to out-of-district transportation. And the, the key to that is, that allows our, our students to come back to our community. That's why the day placements are really good, they, they get to be part of our community.
Sharon, with transportation, that's contractual, correct? Because we have, we're in the third year or the fifth year?
Yes, it's contractual for the bus company, but we also, for our out-of-district transportation, we have to use other companies because everyone's short on drivers, so we use other commercial companies.
And the salary numbers, that's by contract, by union contract, for the most part?
For the most part, yeah, by union contract.
And the same with benefits, I assume?
Yes.
The, the thing though, like.
All three of the lines end up drawn.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
But the, the salary doesn't mean everybody's getting that raise. Some people are earning master's degrees or second master's degrees, and, and as well as, as increasing in seniority.
Okay, thank you.
Technology, the category change, as Peter said, 30.45% and at 6.9% of the total at $105,500. Because we're also going from hard copies to software, we also have to keep our devices updated. Educational Services and Tuition, that includes out-of-district tuition expenses, any kind of evaluation services, that's 5.62, and that's 5.75% of the total change, or $105,000. Then we get into the smaller.
So you're saying our total tuition out, or special out is $105,000 right now?
No, that is the change, it's.
Oh, it's a change, okay.
Yeah, no, it's like. That would be great. There's a lot of transportation cost for that, though.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's just the increase.
Okay.
Educational Supplies and Materials, 1.08% of change or $16,350. Activities and Athletics, that's where the other transportation is in for field trips and athletics. Changes at 13.61% or just 1.71 of the total change, $26,000. Bulk of that is for athletic transportation because of the, where we have to go now for our games. Utilities at 2.42 or 1.44% of the change, $21,920. Facilities and Operations, 1.84, it's only 0.79% of the change at $12,050. Other administrative costs, that's printing and copying, some of the costs up here. The School Committee, category change of 1.06% or 2.26% of the total, $4,000. Legal and Other Insurance is down 2.31% or a quarter of a percent. And that's basically, we were able to decrease the amount for special education legal services because we don't anticipate as much. As Peter said, Professional Development is down 0.77, 0.07 of the total, or $1,050. And that, that's the total change. And the next thing we've done is, is budget by department, and we started doing this a few years ago because there was sort of a misunderstanding that, we have a, you know, $33, $35 million budget, and each of the schools looks at what their discretionary spending is, not so much the administrators, but, you know, a lot of the staff question, well, the district must have a lot of money because we don't have that much. So we then reallocated and looked at it a little differently and said, of all those expenses we looked at, where does the money actually go? What department does it go to? So the first one is nineteen, almost 20% of the budget is for the elementary school, 16.82% for the middle school, high school is 26.32, and then Student Services plus ELL is 10.43. So over 73% of that budget is directly in the schools, teachers, parents, supplies, activities. Then Transportation includes service, which is also a direct support in the schools, which is why the little box there, is at 8.42%. Excuse me, District-wide, all other is 13.99, but that also includes our non-public transportation. We're obligated to transport our resident students to, in, to the private schools that are in our district. It's retiree health insurance, the contingency for salary, school choice, all those don't fit in the schools themselves. School Committee and Administration is 1.82, so that includes the district office. And then Facilities and Maintenance is 2.55%, which makes sense because that includes all the ground, wastewater, water vault. And then we have a nice little chart. You can't read it.
Yeah, so the pie chart just essentially shows, it's like another way of presenting where, where the investments are, and, and the big blue one is salary and benefits, right? It's 76.45%, and then the next biggest one is transportation and.
Can I ask just a, maybe this is an editorial comment. Transportation, I looked in the big book, and to transport kids to BCD and Steiner is $140,000. to transport kids to B C D and Steiner is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Is there any, how are we required to pay that? Is this a legislative mandate?
Yeah, well, it's case law mandate.
Case law?
The, the reasoning is that those resident students, their families pay taxes in our district, which makes them eligible to share in the district's budget.
And their, their existence generates revenue or, or money for, for the district as well.
Okay, alright. I didn't, I didn't realize that it's a revenue enhancer in a way.
How is it revenue?
Yeah, how is it? Because it's a hundred and forty thousand.
No, 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 not, not that, that we're paying doesn't, but can you explain how we're the, the?
We get credit for those kids in calculation of our chapter seventy monthly transfer.
Those kids tend, they come back to us also. So.
I mean, it's, it's a rip off, it's a rip off.
I believe with the commissioner. But it's, it's case law. And it's basically because the families.
I'll never ask that question again.
Oh, you can.
Somebody asked it every three or four years.
The school choice number hasn't changed in thirty years, alright?
I figure it was a point, Bill, where I wanted a motion to say, would I have to do this and share permits thus, that our legal fees would just be as high as?
Part of the, the challenge is because the, in our district, the private school, um, schedule doesn't work with our schedule to have them dropped. So, for example, in Pittsfield, I talked to the business administrator, they drop, their students are on their regular transportation and it's just another stop to drop them off at the private school.
Why can't we do that?
Because the schedules don't align.
Wh- whose responsibility is it for the schedules to align on our end? I mean, can we just say our, these buses are going at this time and this time?
No, we can't. We have to provide that transportation.
No matter what their schedule. So if they said we're starting at three in the morning and we're getting done at seven at night, it would be our responsibility?
And what about going to the state, pushing back it off an increased transportation pot on the athletic side? Because it was a change that was put upon us. That pushed the additional.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's more M I A thing than, than the state. Uh, and, I mean, e- every time I, I approve a bus to the cave or something, it's, it's.
I, I will say Carl's done a good job massaging the schedule the last couple of years. Right. To kind of reduce some of the, it's impossible to do, but I would rely on the girl's soccer team to get more local games. I mean, I know it's, don't sand back in the ocean, but it's.
Right.
It would always, it would be really nice if the M I A A, which changed this whole thing to favor the eastern part of the state, would, um, through their fees or something, be able to reimburse school districts such as us for, um, the, the, the inordinate amount of travel.
Because the M I A just banned and was replaced by an organization that cares about kids.
If Carl or anyone ever made an effort to approach the M I A with this idea.
No, I mean, I, I, I think they talk about it and I think, uh, uh, athletic directors that are, are geographically separated from the rest of the state, bring it up. Uh, we, we can bring it up so that, that, um, um, Carl brings it up at the next meeting. Christie, do you know, is there any effort to address it?
The number of communities that this impacts is relatively small. Like, the, the vast majority of communities in the state of Massachusetts that, because all of the communities had to vote us, like all of the athletic directors had a vote. We voted no. Our vote doesn't have enough of an impact, even collectively with other communities that are in the same boat as us because the number of us are so small.
Right, like, so we don't have power in numbers on that side, but the flip side is that if it's not going to cause that much because it's only a small number of communities that are being impacted, maybe the M I A would be inclined to do something. I don't know, I just feel like it's more just the principle of it.
I would be happy to ask, but this is the same organization that maybe drive to K C C O N to do a training that I could have done virtually, because that's just their rule. And if I didn't, we were going to be removed from the organization. So I understand your frustration and I really frustrate that.
So if we were removed from the M I A A?
Yeah, what happens?
We would no longer be able to participate in the leagues and our students wouldn't be able to participate in the tournaments. I think we want that opportunity for our students.
I was just thinking when we went through, uh. I just thought, Christie, we, I was thinking along the lines of when we dropped out of the, um, N E S C. Because the accreditation process was so expensive.
Yeah.
And then we did our own and we haven't suffered at all.
I think trying to build your own group with athletics might be really challenging. To find contenders for us students.
So we talked about the gross operating budget. Then when we look at the difference between the gross operating and net, it's due to the reduction by choice and tuition. Choices based, level is based on current projections, who we have, where we see openings. Tuition level is based on, again, students we have and looking at the students that will be graduating either eighth or sixth grade at Hartington River. And that net operating budget is, excuse me, thirty three million fourteen thousand seven fifty eight. Or same amount of the increase or four point eight two percent increase. And that's be, that's because of the difference of what the net was last year. Capital budget. Um, the good news, we have a gross after operating, I'm sorry, that should say gross capital budget of five hundred thirty three thousand seven fifty or a decrease of one million one hundred eighty three thousand one twenty five or sixty eight point ninety one percent. And that's because we paid off the bonds this year, which was great. So the, the expense that's in there now is five hundred thousand dollars, which, um, to be allocated to, or recommended to be allocated to the stabilization fund for future, either future maintenance, high maintenance costs or to reduce assessments in the future. Short-term interest, uh, last year, the school committee, last year, the year before, the school committee approved one point five million dollar borrowing for the feasibility and schematic design project with the M S B A. Because we participated before and they paid for part of the project, they don't do it a second time. So we are, are responsible for all of it. Even though it's the one point five, we've worked with our treasurer and our investment advisor and based on the timing of our borrowing, the thirty three thousand seven fifty should be enough to cover the borrowing, because we're not going to borrow until later in, in the year. Our revenue. As you can see, most of it comes from our assessments, minimum local contribution is thirty three percent. And then the additional local, that's above what the minimum is, uh, obviously is forty seven percent. So the eighty percent comes from our communities, which we really appreciate. Chapter seventy is ten percent, our E and D is two percent. Choice is approximately five percent of the revenue, chapter seventy one, two percent, and then all other revenue, which includes um, Medicaid, E rate, interest, uh, is all other. The E and D of the two percent are F Y twenty three certified is seven hundred ninety two thousand one hundred and one or equivalent to two point two seven percent of the F Y twenty four. Each year, E and D is certified and it can be no more, it's like retained earnings for private business. It can be no more than five percent of the subsequent year's budget. Six hundred and seventeen thousand is used to offset the operating budget, which represents seventy seven point eight nine percent of our E and D balance. So it leaves us a little bit in case there's something urgent that comes up that you might need. Now, now to the meat of it, assessments. There are three considerations. Population allocation, which you see in the October report. The minimum local contribution, which you, if you look at the book, you see as part of the asset budget. And then the net assessment, which is the net operating, the net capital, less all of the revenue sources. So first is the population allocation. And for Great Barrington, it went down point three eight percent from six hundred forty five students. That's the wrong one. Yeah, it went down, so the numbers are, are a little reversed here.
No, I think the, I think those are the right numbers, I think the percentage.
Yeah. And then the stock bridge, the percentage went down one point six three percent of the total and West Stockbridge, and this is going to be important, went up three point nine two percent of the total. So again, that's one of the three, uh, impacts for the assessment. Then the minimum local contribution, the, what I have quoted is the law and it's basically saying they're going to do the foundation budget, they're going to figure out how much each town has capacity to spend on school, that's the minimum they need to spend. Which in our case, the total between all three towns is eleven mil, just over eleven million dollars. And then it's allocated over the three towns. The difference between the foundation budget, the total to be spent, minimum local, is this chapter seventy. So minimum local contribution for Great Barrington went from eight million ninety thousand four fifty six to eight million five hundred ninety three thousand six eighty two. That's an increase of about six point two two percent. Stockbridge's minimum local contribution went from one million five sixty nine, two hundred eleven to one million six ninety three, six fifty nine or seven point nine three. And West Stockbridge went from one million three hundred sixty thousand eight hundred to one million four hundred ninety nine thousand seven twenty eight. That's an increase of ten point two one percent. So that's important to remember that they have higher increases as a percentage in both the students and the minimum local.
And you'll see what that does in a second.
So the net assessments change for Great Barrington from twenty thousand three hundred thirty three thousand seven thirty three to twenty one million forty thousand eight seventy two. Stockbridge from three million seven hundred thirty three thousand one forty three to three million eight sixty six, six eighty six. And then West Stockbridge is up from three hundred, three hundred and ninety, three million three ninety one, eight forty five to three million six hundred fifty three thousand six eighty three. And then the next page shows what the impact, the next slide. So the total assessment, net assessment change is four point oh two. And the change to Great Barrington is three point four eight at seven hundred seven thousand one thirty eight. Stock three point five eight percent at one hundred thirty three thousand five forty three. And then West Stockbridge, seven point seven two percent increase at two hundred sixty one thousand eight thirty eight. So when people ask why Stockbridge is, I mean, West Stockbridge is so much higher. You look at the percentage increase of the total students and the percentage increase of the minimum local contribution. And that, and then the, just the net assessment increase. And that's why they have such a large, a larger increase than the other two communities. Question? It's based on a combined effort, which is the property values, equalized property values and income. And then there's a little percentage in the, in there for the foundation budget increase. The foundation budget starts with, um, first it starts with, there's, there's a table that says for a kindergarten student that is a regular ed student, you get, it's, it, you get X amount of dollars allocated to that. For kindergarten students, special ed, you know, they come up with the full budget and then they say, okay, you have a number of students, fifteen. And that, the average is fifteen thousand foundation budget. And then they use that, they look at the wealth of the community, they use that fifteen thousand and then they do the whole formula. So it's the foundation budget plus the relative wealth of a community.
So they look at, they look, it's, it's like an aggregate of personal tax returns. They, they look at personal tax returns from the community. And again, it's not, we can't tax people's income, but they use it as a direct for how much time they're paying.
And then each community, the max of the total obligation is at individually eighty two point um, five percent of their portion of the foundation budget and then the, the state fills in the rest. It's eleven million dollars. We, we, as you can see, looking at the budgets, we could have like two and a half spirits, but no grounds, no superintendent, and so that's the number.
Anyone else?
I know, Peter, you alluded to the fact that some of the cuts at the high schools were due to jobs and student enrollment. But I'm hearing from people that are upset about the cuts. And so is it, can you give any more kind of explanation into the thought process as to why those positions and the departments?
Yeah, um, um, I mean, there are a whole bunch of things, right? I, I, I expect people to be upset, right? It, it, it's hard when there, there are reductions. So, so on the highest level, there, there shifts in enrollment, right? Not so many years ago, we had five hundred and thirty five students. In, in recent memory, we had more than six hundred students, right? The number, I didn't look at it today. Christie, do you happen to remember what the number is today?
Uh, yes, four hundred and fifty six. I was just on doing it.
Okay, so, so four hundred and fifty six, right? So the difference between five thirty five and four fifty six is, is, is significant. Um, and, and we looked at this and like, now you know, we wouldn't make any cuts, right? I'd be coming to you, asking you for additional resources and, and adding positions. But, but you look at, at sort of class sizes and how kids break out and where we're investing and making choices. And, 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 and then, and then we do it around that. We try to make decisions that, and people argue about this, right? But we try to make decisions that are, are, are least impactful on, on teachers and their learning. Um, the, 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 there, there are fewer reductions at the elementary school and the middle school and, and they have less room for those reductions. And, and the high school is, is bigger in total numbers, but it's also staffed differently. And there was a little more flexibility, uh, uh, this round at the high school. The other thing is, if you, if you, uh, uh, invest, and I wasn't saying more, but if you invest in the elementary school and, and you set things up right, then, uh, then, um, you don't have to invest as much later on. But the challenge is, what's interesting about the high school or, or for that matter, any high school is the range of varied opportunities, right? And, and we're trying to, to offer really exciting vocational opportunities and in a wide range of academic opportunities. And, uh, the, the other districts that, that have made different choices that, that we've not made, right? We, we, uh, uh, sustained investments in, in multiple areas that, that, that we care about. For a district or even a school of our size that, that we run, the range of programs we run is, is quite uh, unusual. So I don't know, that totally gets, gets.
I don't think it does, because I think what, what helped, I think, is people understanding kind of the thought process. Not so much why it's happening at the high school, but how those decisions get identified, I think. Maybe that's a level of specificity that you can go into.
Yeah, they could, they, no, I'm, I'm happy.
I think bringing people along on the challenges and on the ride helps. Helps, you know, in the overall understanding.
Yeah, so let's have Christie speak in really explicit detail. Maybe, Christie, one of the things you can touch on is. Maybe, Kristi, one of the things you can touch on is sort of, not, not in number of classes, but how many people we carry in each department and, and sort of what that means in relation to what, what we're teaching. And, and in some areas, we, we have an expectation that all students do something for four years, and in other areas, less.
So when I, when I was asked to look at what could be potential cuts that I would consider in the context of this budget, the first thing I did was look at enrollment um, across the four main content areas, was where I was really focused. Um, and that is directly connected to what Peter described in terms of our overall enrollment going down from my first year, we were at five twenty-five. Um, and this is my fifth year, down to four fifty-six, and that's a pretty substantial drop. In addition to that, during the COVID years, there was actually a couple of places where we increased our staffing. So in social studies, we, when I took the principalship, we were staffed at five point five, uh, full-time. In social studies, we're, we are now staffed at six. In the math department, we were at five point five when I took the principalship, we're now staffed at six. So we had places where we had actually increased during COVID, and I think that, that for very good reasons. Um, but now we're coming out of that, and I had to look at enrollment numbers. The other thing I, I would share is I really did try to distribute this across the departments. And I don't know that it was framed exactly correctly in the presentation. So the presentation suggested that there is a one point oh cut in social studies, and that is not a hundred percent accurate. It is a, uh, there is an open position right now, well, it's not open, it's filled with a long-term sub. And we would just be not hiring for that position. But we do have a science teacher who has certification in social studies that would pick up some social studies sections. So we would be reducing the number of sections in social studies and reducing the number of sections in science. Same thing with math. We have a part-time math teacher that's teaching two classes, so that's point four. Reducing that position, I have three science teachers that are also certified in math. So I was looking for ways that I could make reductions or propose reductions where I would have most flexibility on the ground to make decisions based on the enrollment that comes out this year, uh, for course numbers. The, um, the English cut was a cut that we had, um, discussed last year. And then, um, through grant funding, proposed the reading and writing interventionist position. And that position is the position that I don't think we had gotten to the specifics, but that was the one I was looking at. Because we had already reduced in English.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
Can I ask one more question? Just with that drop, well, with the drop, is that something we need to be concerned about? Is that something we need to talk about?
So my understanding, and I've talked to Miles about this, in terms of enrollment coming in from the middle school. This freshman class is one of the smallest classes. Um, and it was a small class going all the way back. Like, I think it's the grade that, back in the middle school, there were only three sections. And it was the, there was like this weird dip instead of a bump that came through. Um, I, I anticipate next year, our enrollment will hold pretty steady. The graduating class right now is at a hundred and five. And I predict we'll get, I predict we'll get at least that, maybe even a little bit more in the incoming class. So our numbers could go up just a tad. Um, I think, I think we'll be steady for a few years.
The, the one thing, so the, the, the freshmen, or the ninth graders, is a small class. The current, um, juniors, it's a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-eight, it's a very large class. So it, it, it.
The largest class in over a decade graduated two years ago. Yeah, and they were still here during COVID, not that they were hired, and they were, they graduated a hundred and fifty-four, which was like a decade high, so.
Yeah, uh, so, I mean, we, Sharon's done this in other contexts. We could cer, we could, we could share some predictions around that going forward. The, the total enrollment of the high school will, in some ways, be down because of that one small class. And then when that class graduates, then, then we might see a, a, a bump. In the context of the MSBA process, they, I think the number, uh, is four eighty-five, which is where I think we'll be, um, we'll be close to. And, and then if, if we expand some additional, uh, CBTU programs, that it might draw some additional students. And, and depending on where we land with the, a building, there's a bump built into that, too.
So what's interesting is that the MSBA did two different studies to figure out what they would allow us to build for eighty-five. And we're at what right now?
Four fifty-six.
So obviously, they anticipate we're gonna have an increase over the years. And their studies are usually pretty right on.
Yeah, very much right on there.
The one thing I would share that came up, um, in my meetings with, um, teachers around this, and I think they're right in expressing this, is that while our numbers have decreased, the student need has increased as a result of both the pandemic and the shifting demographics that they're trying to serve. So I just do, we do have to always keep that in mind, that the numbers are important. Um, but student need is equally important as we're thinking about these decisions. And they're hard ones, I mean, they're not easy decisions to make, but I do just want to make that because it came up.
That's true, and we're at an all-time high on non-classroom staff. We have that in the history of the school, and that's not being touched by this one, so.
Kristi, can I just ask? If I hear you right, the science teacher that's certified in social studies is gonna pick up some of the slack of the, the reduction and not being filled?
Correct.
My concern there, I, I know I'm, I'm maybe out of my ballpark here in regards to, um, being a school committee person, and I know it's an administrative decision, is, uh, my concern is on the elective program. And the social studies department has been strong in the electives. I'm very concerned about how many electives will be offered with this position being eliminated. Um, I'm hearing, though, in a way, it's, and maybe I'm wrong, is that, is this science teacher gonna pick up, like, three sections? Which would, which would minimize?
Two or three is what I would imagine. And again, I, I think, it's gonna be when we see the student enrollment numbers for next year, that those decisions are gonna have to be made. And it's not unlike any year, it's just this year will be a little more complicated if we're having some cross-department conversations in terms of teacher assignment. Um, it is nice when there are teachers in departments that have additional certifications because of the flexibility it provides, so.
So that's a possibility to minimize this reduction.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's a real tension, right?
Oh, yeah, I, I understand that.
We're, we're excited about our electives. How many electives can we offer in a, in a tighter budget year? Right? And, and maybe you don't offer a full range of electives every year, but you offer them every other year. And, and from a kid's first, or a young person's perspective, they still get to enroll in electives, which is not offering ten simultaneously, we're offering eight or six.
I just had one question. So with this leveling up, um, process we're going through, class size, teacher ratio is, you know, what I have learned, the most important thing to success or failure. And it really seems like the freshman and sophomore years is the main thing. With these changes and these shifts, are you still gonna be at the levels that you're satisfied with? And you think the teachers will be able to?
That's the goal. Um, and this year, we're, we were unable to fill our, our, uh, one-year position in biology. And it bumped our biology numbers up as a result. I, we did our best, but the, the numbers were actually closer to like twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and it's, it's too many, frankly. That is a hiring issue that I just did want to name. I think when the sections get that large, in this context, it's too large. Like, twenty-four is not a huge class, but in the context of this, um, structure, it's too large of a class. Really, the sweet spot, I think, is like sixteen to twenty-two, probably max.
My question would be, followed would be, is what we're asking of them, the reason why we're having trouble filling it? Because it's a difficult?
No, that was just a one-year posting, and that is.
That was after the ninth or tenth grade that we had twenty-four people in the model?
That was ninth, it's, it's our ninth graders in science, so. And that was, it was a late biology one-year posting. I'm not surprised we, we struggled to fill it. And we did, like, our best to, to balance the classes. But just seeing how it played out this year with the larger class sizes in biology in particular, I, it can't say that there's not an impact, right? Of course, there's an impact.
Well, we're gonna see how the scores, I mean, we should ask you. And if the, the one tangible success we've had is the biology scores, you know, the English and the math, not so much. Um, so, um, we also want, um, more concern about the math, so we'll see.
So the, the math curriculum, which I know we approved and I very much supported two, three years ago, and where I felt like a twenty-plus bump every year on it, how long does that can continue for? I support it, I'm just, I don't, I remember having this big discussion about it. This is line three twenty-five, I guess.
So the, your investment in a lost student math?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And if that, if it's in perpetuity, I'm fine with that.
My sense of it is that, and I'll do a little research and come back to you, that some of those materials, it's not, disposable is not the right word. What's the right word, Krista? Consolable, right? So, uh, uh, they, they're, they're consumable materials. So I think we, we're, we're committed to making that investment here. Anyone else?
As we were doing the cycle last year, you talked about, um, doing like a, a budget one-on-one for staff starting in the fall, and I was wondering if that happened?
No, and I feel badly about that, that it was something I had hoped to do, and we talked about it, and, uh, and.
It's still.
We, we, we will do it, but we didn't do it, um, this fall. And, and I mean, one thing, like, I, I appreciate how many people are on this call, right? There, there's seventy-three, uh, people on the call, and, and a large number of them are, are staff or colleagues. So we, we'll continue to talk on this. Uh, you have a little additional context, the, the budget books, the, the online budget are on the district's website. Their, their, uh, the budgets are in libraries, right? People wanna look at those, there's, there are extra, uh, town halls, there are extra copies here. Uh, and, and, and I think a, a good homework for folks is to, uh, read through and highlight things. And, and let's continue to, uh, um, to talk about.
So our public hearing is the seventh, am I correct on that? Twenty-nine, okay. Which is our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So questions can be brought up then, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And there can be change, there could be possibly changes made at that time.
But we usually don't make any changes after the public hearing, so yes.
Okay.
All right, and then the other thing, I think Sharon showed us in her previous meetings. So we know what the, the governor's proposed budget is, but, but the House and Senate are working on theirs, and then it gets reconciled. And there's a possibility, uh, it might change, which, which is unusual about the governor's budget is, is while there, there are reductions in some areas from an education standpoint, it was, it was pretty generous.
Yeah.
Uh, so it'll be interesting. I, I've not.
Well, there'll be no changes before we vote, though.
No.
No, no. Unfortunately, the backwards way to do this, I'm sure. Um, so, uh, other things, and I think we shared this last meeting, actually, I can't recall. Uh, uh, we, we did our meetings and, and, uh, interviews with our architect designer. And, and we, uh, uh, made a recommendation, the, the contract is being negotiated with them. Waiting to hear back from the MSBA on that. But, um, uh, we, we selected the MSBA and, and, uh, William Ron. It's really the Denisco contract, and William Ron is a, a well-known architect, uh, an architectural firm that's, that's partnering, uh, with them on it. And, and we had an initial meeting, and Jason, maybe in the next section, could talk more about it, but we, we're excited.
Yeah, very excited. I think he will be very happy with this. Policy subcommittee will be March twelfth. Buildings and grounds?
Have moment.
Superintendent's evaluation?
March seventh.
March seventh, and ten five. Finance?
Uh, we met yesterday and just went over all this, basically the presentation that you guys saw today, so there's nothing, you heard everything on that. Um, traditionally, we've had another finance committee meeting before the public hearing based on things that are listed at the presentation, but I didn't hear anything today that necessarily necessitates it. But if people have things they want to discuss, they're asked questions of the administration department, just let me know and schedule a finance committee meeting. Unless anybody says they wanna have one.
There, there's a tentative one scheduled for four-thirty, the day after the public hearing, so.
Yeah.
We have to, yeah, that we can just put it in.
Yeah, but I, that's, that was there to, in case something.
Right. I'm sorry, if we have, like, people want this.
Yeah, exactly. That would be on the twentieth.
That would be the one.
Yeah, right before, okay, yeah.
Agreed, Rick, I don't say the reason we're gonna need one, but something would have changed. At least we have a date there. Our negotiations has not started.
Do you want to share the thing that we're holding gates for the interspace bargaining training?
Yes.
Uh, on March fifth and sixth. Uh, and, and an interesting thing, that there used to be dozens of interspace bargaining trainers in Massachusetts. And, and a whole gaggle of them retired at the same time. So we reached out to the, uh, Federal Mediation and Reconciliation Service, and they're able to, to do that. And it's our tax dollars that work, so no cost to us.
First of all?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, a, a couple of things that I'm flagging, and, and I updated this. Uh, we're, we're trying to fill, uh, the librarian position at the elementary school. Um, we did fill the, the directed study coordinator there, but that created an additional vacancy for a, a secretary. So there's a lateral move, so we're working on that. Uh, nothing for the moment at the middle school. And then, uh, Kristi earlier mentioned the CBT assistant principal. So we're, we're not optimistic that we're gonna find somebody at this point in the school year. So we anticipate, uh, working with two retired folks as consultants to help us move the work now. While we launch a bigger search for a, an assistant principal now to start after July one. So, uh, it, it's listed sort of twice there. Uh, we, we'll move ahead with consultants for the time being while we kind of fill the position for, for next fiscal year. Uh, and the rest of it are, are, uh, 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 stipends and, and, and one reservation, thank, thank Switzer for her work as a, as a parent in the middle school.
Any old or new business? Any public comment?
So i- i- if people are online and they have questions, you can raise your hand and they will, uh, recognize.
And in the room, too?
Yes.
Josh, what brings, go ahead.
Oh, she was here in the room.
I go back and forth, I alternate.
Hi, thank you, I just had a quick, I just had a very quick question. Um, I, I was just looking, I just, you had invited people to educate themselves before the public, uh, before the public hearing, uh, in a few weeks. Um, and I was just going through the budget book, which is as comprehensive as ever, thank you, Sharon. Um, but I'm wondering, just for, for those of us who maybe aren't great at reading the lines, and it's possible that I missed this. Is there any way that a, a publicly available kind of one sheet with what the proposed cuts are, just so people can understand what those are, would be made available? And I apologize if it's actually in the budget book, I've been looking through it, and I don't seem to see anything like that, like a simple breakdown of, of what the, uh, what the material changes will be in the budget. I think that might be helpful for the public, so that everyone's coming into the hearing with, with accurate information.
Josh, we'll, we'll put the PowerPoint presentation online.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. Come on, just.
Uh, I don't know where it is.
You can come on up.
Then people can hear you.
Yes.
Hi, Kelsey Ramona, tutor pronoun, the special education teacher at Monument Mountain. I am the SOG Environmental Committee Advisor. Um, I am also the GSA advisor and the SOCA Students of Color advisor. I am also the GSA advisor and the SOCA Students of Color advisor. One of the positions that was not discussed that is being cut is DEI coordinator, the DEIV, I guess, coordinator. This position was newly created based on the data collected from the Stokes Collective. Considering the large number of concerns we've had about. Inclusion and ensuring like that our staff and students are anti-racist and accepting. The fact that this is one of the first things on the chopping block is honestly like horrifying. If we truly believe in this work, then it is something we are going to prioritize. Because if we want to create a space that helps students really be ready for the world. Be ready for like what is next and to create a community that is more inclusive and like. That say teachers of color or different types of people would want to come work in. Then we need someone to help invest in that, and by cutting this position. We are really saying that it's not something we believe in, which is really disappointing, so. Just as the, as a white cis hetero person who is in charge of these. Clubs that are supposed to be supporting our marginalized students, like, which is problematic in itself. Like we need more adults in the building that represent our students and. Our DEIV coordinator is one of the people who would help make that environment possible. And without her, I'm not sure that that work would be really moving forward, so that is it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for bringing it up, i- in some ways, we did make some real progress, we we hired. Three additional staff of color this past year, teachers, and and two of them were previously paraprofessionals. Who who became teachers, so so that's a nice step in in one direction. And and this decision or recommendation wasn't made lightly, I think we can support some of the work. With with consultants and use our resources differently, but but I also get. That it's a, it's a punch to the gut that that we were able to to create the position and then are potentially stepping away.
I'll leave the newsletter.
I was wondering what's happening with the position of English teacher at the middle school? Is that still a long-term vacancy? Is somebody teaching the class?
You have a long-term something.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have something, but there's a long-term something there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Ted Collins? You are unmuted, Ted. Ted, feel free to comment.
Oh, you just. Yeah, I mean, give a second.
Ted, I'm gonna come back to you. Rebecca Honeg?
Yes, hi, um. Our daughter, Rebecca Honeg, Tearingham, three children in the school, our daughter, who's in tenth grade, came home. From her recent SOB meeting and said. Mama, Dad, they're gonna cut the DEI position, and I came to this meeting and I listened and I heard nothing, I didn't hear it come up, so I'm texting her. You're wrong, I think you were wrong, and now I come to understand. She's not in fact wrong, and I'm, I'm just in total shock. I I can't believe, given this current climate, that would even be a consideration, given the deep. And enduring work we need to do, given the commitments we've made that have been made over and over again at these meetings. Given what we understood and thought this after the Stokes report, I mean, that was chapter one of this work, we we have so many chapters ahead. Of us, there is that amazing quote, you know, don't tell me your priorities, show me your budget and I'll tell you your priorities. And I just feel like we need to remember that in this moment. This has to be a priority, I'm just, please, please do not cut that position, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Ted, have you fixed your technical problems? Sarah Mugridge? Excuse me, by the way.
Hi, no, that was great, hi, thank you, Sarah Mugridge Monterey.
That's my fault. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Starting at Sarah Mugridge Monterey, parent of a child in the middle school and another child in the high school. And I I actually appreciate you're making the the budget available. I do understand from past meetings and also Peter speaking on WAMC, that we should be looking out for. Training for staff, I believe at all levels, but training for staff in terms of. Inclusion, in terms of being able to to sort of hold spaces, these affinity spaces that were already mentioned tonight, but also in the classrooms and. I just wanted to know if like where we should be looking for that in the budget, if that was part of the. SEL line, or if there's a sort of separate, yeah, I guess if you could kind of clarify. You know, how we how we would understand the expenditure, and I think kind of echoing Rebecca's last comment, that that's really what we're looking for is where. Where that's gonna be first.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is is for the next meeting, I'll come back with. Sort of a crosswalk of some of our grant funds and how we use that to support professional development. I'll also look at our sort of overall PD plan. So there's, some of it's built into our schedule, right? So we have. Seven half-days and four whole-days connected to professional development, and some of it happens there, and that's just built into. Our time, the principals and staff also have something on the order of twenty faculty meetings a year. And some work happens there, there's also. Several Skype-ated roles, particularly instructional leads and and social emotional leads. And 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 there's work, there's work happening there, so let me come back with with a slide or two, maybe three or four. Detailing some of some of that work.
Ted, last chance, can you get off now, you guys are open to the public hearing. Okay, we are adjourned.
Okay, thank you.